All right, it is now 8:34 on Wednesday, the 28th. We'll call a special meeting in North Willoughby Pool Park Recreation District to order. First, all commissioners are present along with the director. The agenda, first thing on the agenda is the fall schedule. So, this is the updated one, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Rex. Go ahead. Thanks, Rex.
This is a copy for you.
It's like this one.
Here, give them mine. No, that's okay, I'm just trying to, that's okay. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Shane had the stack of all.
All right, Rex, do you want to go ahead with the schedule, please?
Oh, sure.
Actually, Mr. Chair, who's taking minutes?
Point. Who's turn is it?
It's Commissioner Shinkleton's.
That's what I figured, and so I was trying to put that out there.
So, for the record, Commissioner Shinkleton will be taking minutes in the special meeting tonight. Thank you for hopping on the Holy Hand grid idea.
Okay, so as an overview, we're have pretty much the as wide open as the pool's ever been in terms of hours and activities and all that sort of thing. It's a little bit different format. It's similar to what we did because it's, you know, we're always looking for what's easy to read. You know, from the last meeting, people had a chance to look at it, and then from their comments, I made a number of changes on it, or we made a number of changes on it. So, I don't know what else to say. I'd like to do, you know, in future more color, I didn't really know that we were supposed to submit it to the board for approval until recently, so it's been 11 months of, you know, just doing the schedule and not doing it because we weren't open. Questions?
What happens on Wednesday from 9:00 to 11:00? Lap swim closes, you come in and you can swim till 9:00 and then you get out of the pool. Who is in the pool from 9:00 to 11:00?
Swim school.
Except that it's at 11:00, the lap swimmers can be back in the pool, so is that going to be de-conflicted?
No.
So, I noticed, having spoken from experience, there's two to three lanes of lap swimmers in the middle, and then there's school on the two outside. So, you have lap swimmers in like lanes 3, 4, and 2, and then you have the students doing it over here by the stairs, and then they have 5 and 6 on that side. They take down the lane marker, and then they have 5 and 6 on that side, almost like it's set up right now. And so, you know, and so you've got two lanes, two to three lanes with lap swimmers, and then sometimes what you also see is you'll see no students in lane 1, which is this side by the stairs, and because they don't have enough students, and then you'll have lap swimmers in lane 1 also that way.
And also note that on Wednesdays, like you were asking about your special program, we have physical therapy in there.
Ah, no, that was, that's the, no, but that's from 9:00. Okay, that is the exact same time. That's fine, I just wanted to, I didn't see that. That was all I wanted because I want to make, I'm not trying to get more time for lap swimmers because I don't care. I just want to make sure that we are not, I just remember when I first got here, we were paying lifeguards for times we had no one in the pool, and I thought that was ridiculous. So, that was why I would look into this, so thank you.
Shane?
Yeah, I really like the box schedule here. I think Rex was the first to recognize that the old schedule was very hard to read, and I think staff was pretty wise in, and I'm assuming not reinventing the wheel, that looks rather viral traumatic, I like that. I really like the box schedule. Wendy's logo up there looks, I think the board's logo, but we have to do the work. Wendy, your logo looks awesome. There are a couple little changes that I think might help us, you know, based on some community feedback and some surveys we've done in the past, talking with Sean about how much time the lap swimmers need even, but the biggest thing, the, if you work, say you work until, say you work every weekday until 5:30, 6 o'clock, and maybe you have a two or a three-year-old that you want to get in the kiddie pool, but your kid's bedtime is, say, 7:30, 8 o'clock, so it gets tough, so maybe 8:00, 8:30, something like that. So, I think if we, on Tuesday and Thursday, I think if we ran the lap swim 6:30 to 8:00 and had the waiting pool open at that same time, I think that would kind of possibly solve a lot of issues.
Tell me that in Tuesday?
Tuesday, Thursday, 6:30 to 8:00 on lap and on the kiddie pool, and obviously that would need everybody else's input too. And then the only other thing I've seen was, I know Friday, Friday lap swim has been a pretty good revenue or money maker at times, maybe running a 5:30 to 7:00 evening lap on Friday might be beneficial, same with the kiddie pool. Again, just a suggestion.
When's open swim on Friday?
7:30.
Because I know open swim on Friday's been selling out the past.
And what did you want to do, lap swim?
Lap swim from 5:30 to 7:00 on Friday, and the kiddie pool at the same time with the thought that hopefully it takes, because we've been selling out and turning people away, maybe we put 20 little ones in the kiddie pool and move them out the door, maybe.
Well, it also, when you put 20 kids in the kiddie pool, you're putting, you're keeping others from being in the pool.
Correct, exactly. Exactly. So, if you had that window, if you had that window a lap, then those kids could come get in the kiddie pool earlier and open up that space later.
And that's that 5:30 time, the only people that are in the pool is NWA.
And they're out at 5:00, I think, aren't they now?
No, they stay till 7:00, Monday through Friday, but there are only two or three lanes, whatever they were going to pay for, so it's like, we have three other lanes that we can fill, so I can.
But you would need another, I think that if you have the kiddie pool open, you need a lifeguard that is pretty closely watching the kiddie pool.
Well, they have to be at the kiddie pool.
Yes, well, that's, I think so.
I mean, and state law says if something, it don't matter who's in the building, if something gets thrown in there, it needs to be out within 30, something resembling a title. If something resembling a title gets thrown in there, it needs to be out in 30 minutes, or 30 seconds, 30 seconds, 30 seconds. So, it always needs to watch very closely.
No, I agree, because I've been there with my grandchildren when they were young, when they were young, and there was not adequate lifeguard.
I'm sorry. Are those us?
Yeah, those were the three and a half there.
Just a couple of things. One, actually before we reopened it last year, we actually did approve the schedule. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, so we actually, we actually did go through that exercise. I just wanted to make sure that was clarified. Two, I feel a little bit uncomfortable making specific changes without the person who's, who, I'm assuming that, Jenny, thank you, I think, I'm assuming that she wrote the schedule, and so I'm a little uncomfortable with, with asking for specific changes that we might try to vote on without having that tie-in. I just, and I realize that September 3rd is the beginning of next week, I realize that. It just makes me uncomfortable, so I want to state that, and then I think the other thing is, and so it's a little more, it's a little more, it's a little less about the details of this. I think we need to be really careful, I think we need to realize that we're starting, I believe that there is a correlation, I think we're trying to be open too much. I think that my expectation as a board member, and I don't know about anybody else's because we didn't really have a big planning discussion, but was that we were going to ramp up, and the thing is, is that I'm worried that, and maybe I'm off-base here, if I am, I am, but I'm worried that we're going to suffer from burnout if we haven't already, and so part of that, I believe, I believe it's a symptom that we may be open too much already, trying to do too many things. That's how I feel, so I'm not, I personally wouldn't advocate for let's add here and there, because I think we need to have under our belts really comfortably what we're trying to do before we add anything more. That's, it's just a sense that I kind of get, and I'm, again, nobody can agree, I mean, I can be the only one that feels that way, but that's how I feel about how we're moving forward.
I'd like to say, one of the things I know I would like to see, and you bring it up, not that I'm adverse, trust me, as a lap swimmer, I'd love to have more hours, however, when we talk about hours, the cost benefit, right? And I think that's, that's a very good point. What has been the cost benefit so far being open the hours we've been, and what's our profit-loss margin? We have nothing to compare that to yet before we talk about more hours. So, I do agree that we need to have some way to judge where we're at and where we're I feel confident, having been here for swim school and seeing the balance of lap swimmers and swim school going on in the middle of the day, that I think that the aquatics director, and I don't want to speak for her, but I think that she is aware of cost benefit because she was guarding while there were lessons going on, you know, and so there was that, how can I make this work for everybody, because there were people swimming in lane 1, and she had lessons going on in the kiddie pool, so there was an awareness there by her demonstrated in front of me, but I do agree that without that profit-loss margin, we're kind of shooting in the dark here. So, while more is always better, maybe sometimes less is the way forward, I would agree.
And I don't mind having less hours open, it's just if the pool is open and it's not going, does it look like it's being fully utilized? That's my problem, and that's my concern, and that, I think most of his recommendations were not more hours, it was just, let's, there's hours that are already open, we should open it for lap swim as well, or whoever.
But there are staffing considerations to that too.
Yes, there are.
And so, part of what I'm talking about is capacity, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just saying I think that there are capacity considerations, and maybe it's, maybe it's not an issue. I just, I'm worried that it is. Are we, are we, are we burning people out already? Maybe we're not, I mean, I know, I saw on the Facebook page that we have potentially new lifeguards.
New lifeguards.
Okay, and so maybe that, maybe that's not an issue.
There are announcements for lifeguards.
I don't know the answer to that.
He knows that, but, and that's, that is, I think that is a concern, that we don't, we aren't fully up to where we were before, so I agree with you, we shouldn't have a schedule that has this many hours if we don't have the lifeguards.
And I think I'm, I'm just, I'm saying it as a, it's a concern I have just because I don't think anybody, by the way, I don't think anybody in this room would ever want to compromise safety, so I'm not saying that I think we're doing that.
Right.
I just want, I just wanted it to be understood that at least from my perspective as a board member, I'd rather have us be, I'd rather not have us try to be everything to everybody, because one, we never will be, and two, I mean, we have to start looking at where the real benefits are, you know, in terms of costs, because we can't, you know, that, those were some of the complaints that we had a couple of years ago, was, well, there's only two people in the pool, which I know as a lap swimmer, lap swimmers love that.
We do.
Sure, of course.
But it's not cost-effective.
On the other hand, yeah, it's not, it's, we're flushing money, and we need to be sure that we're not doing that, so I'm not saying that it needs to hold up this process right now, what I'm saying is I think it really would be best to start looking at how can we, how can we better measure that, and I think that there's, there's a cost portion, a financial portion to it, but then I think there's also a staffing-capacity portion to it, and I don't, I'm not saying I know all the answers, it just would be a smart thing to look out there for.
Could I have a look at, I would turn the page over, look at the very bottom part, I think that addresses that to some extent, I agree with what you're saying.
What are we looking at?
The break.
Additional information.
Yeah, additional information.
So, how do the health department and fire department determine our pool capacity?
Well, they're part of it.
How?
They tell us what the capacity is.
So, the health and safety codes, the island health and safety codes, and unified building code, and the occupational safety and health code, so not really the fire department, they interpret the codes and they give, they give you a recommendation, but the codes actually do that. So, by putting this on here, is that something that is actual factually true?
I don't know.
And I would say no, and we probably need to get that statement out there.
All right.
Because the fire department and the health department are not part of determining pool capacity, they do it as per the codes.
Well, it's not, that's not, okay.
In a litigious world, we should probably put that through our lawyers before we put something on there, because I know if we walk this across the street to Ray Merrill, he'd probably throw a gasket.
Yeah.
And I'm sure if we went down to Allen County Health Department, they would probably do the same thing, because they don't determine, they don't determine that, so the codes do. You know, you know what I'm saying? I totally get the intent, I totally get it.
Do they have a capacity posted anywhere?
Yes, you have to, by law, it's, it's posted, I think wherever the fire bill for the building is, and it should be as soon as you come in, and it includes the whole building, so it includes locker rooms, office spaces, this room, the general pool room, so it's, it looks at square footage of the facility, so it actually is quite a bit of people, so, so that's what that looks at, but that's, that's the unified building code. The health department uses OSHA, and they use an FPA-1, so, which is the life and safety code, so those are what it determines that, not the actual departments themselves.
Okay, what I would like is if you would help me write that, so that the intent is that people, I mean, like, so the capacity is 175 people, the building is, what is it? Something crazy, 400 and something? Those are chaotic, you know, so you can't, you can't.
It's a big building, though.
It's a big building.
I mean, you can't run a program that way, imagine what it would be like out there. So, it's, that's the intent is to just say something about it, because you can't explain that one-to-one with everybody that's complaining because they can't get in.
I would ask our insurance company to review that statement and say, what do you suggest we put in there, because they would actually have that language.
Okay, it's not been my experience, the insurance company is.
So, what are we paying them for?
Insurer stuff. I mean, they, they came in, they did a risk assessment, you know, that's like, okay, this is, this needs, like, for example, the sidewalks out there.
Do they not insurance if somebody wants to sue us?
Do they not insure us if somebody?
Wants to sue us, yeah.
Which is why the insurance company should look at these kind of little documents to make sure that it fits with.
It's a risk mitigation, that's what, that's what the intent is, so in some cases, and I know you understand that, but I think it's, our expectation based on our previous history, right, our previous experience, is that they should, it sounds like maybe they're not being super cooperative, I suppose, but in addition to physical risk mitigation, that there's policy risk mitigation as well, right, and that's, I think that's where we're expecting it, because that's what we're used to, is firing something off and saying, hey, you know, can you look at this, and getting at, you know, either a, that looks great, or, okay, here's probably what you want to do instead, and that's, and that's why we wanted them to look at our handbook. I think if, I think this is probably a great trial activity, meaning, right, handbook is ridic, you know, it's, it's not small, we all know this, or we would have been done with it a long time ago, maybe something like this, if you could just keep, if you could try with them and keep us posted, because really, it seems like what, we think that's part of surgery, and maybe we need to either understand that it isn't, or we need to assess our situation. I don't know that it really exists, but, you know.
Well, okay.
I would be surprised if the insurance company has a lot to say about it also.
Our previous one did, that's what we're saying.
Oh, yeah, they would review everything.
Well, see, that's the thing, the only company that would insure us through a broker was the discount company because of our record.
Okay, so you would think, and that's because of the Andy King issues, so let's be, let's be clear, it's not our, it is the district's record, it's not our record.
Well, it is.
It is, it is our record to a sense, but I, I.
I wasn't talking, I was trying to.
So, yeah, I've got a hard time saying that's our record, because I wasn't here when that happened, and that's, that leaves a bad taste in my mouth, but you're correct, it is our record, but because of what happened with Andy King, that's, let's be clear, that's why we did that. So, you would think in light of Andy King, the Andy King incident, in light of the insurance and the lawsuits because of that, the current insurance company would be more than willing to look at this, to stop future lawsuits, but if that's not the case, then I would say strike that out with just the, in every aquatic activity, our number one consideration is safety, period, in every volume.
That's clean.
Yep, that's clean, down to the point, you know?
Is it, question, suggestion, we've been turning a lot of people away at the door, is it worth putting natatorium capacity 175, stopping on lifeguard availability?
No, that's his concern, that is, that is him and the guards concerned, if they can't safely handle it, I mean, by all means, they have a right to show, you know, to determine what is a safe operation, and that would be a hard one for somebody to argue, wait, I didn't get to go in and use the pool, couldn't safely take care of you, okay, we'll see you in court. Yep, see you in court.
I agree in a way, I just wondered if it should be on this guy's, the other thing I wonder, to drop the, to drop the natatorium, the pool, whatever you want to call it, capacity, to drop it 43% from 175 to 100, and when we see our attendance numbers drop 45% compared to two years ago, that definitely seems to me as that would be a board policy, when other pools are running a 199 for a similar sized space.
What, are we?
We're turning, we're closing the doors at 100 and turning the people away.
Here?
Yes.
Is it because we don't have enough lifeguards?
Lifeguards, I don't know.
I thought, I thought it was 175.
I feel like this isn't the.
So, yeah, this is not, this is not on the agenda, we can definitely bring it up for a discussion at the next board meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
That's the one reason, I wondered if the capacity shouldn't be on the schedule, because the public and the board does not know.
Capacity is on the fireball, look at it before I leave the building tonight.
But remember, it also has to do with how many lifeguards you have, and if we're.
Well, that's safety, yeah.
Yeah, if we're short of lifeguards, we're short of lifeguards, so putting it in print, that 175 can say, you know, you're stopping me at 100, and then try and explain.
So, we're going to table that.
We're going to table that, we're going to table that for agenda. All right, get another one. All right, so looking at the schedule, striking out the second half of additional information, full regulation, any changes for this part? Or suggestions? Full rules and regulations on the back. Military active-duty, active-duty dependents, retirees and retiree dependents, any changes or suggestions to this part?
The, for the military retirees, doesn't MWR pay something for that you left that part on?
Give me.
It just says.
About they pay for it?
Yeah, it says they're going to pay 325, pay in laps, and they'll pay this amount, it doesn't say what you paid in full, paid by MWR.
If you read the top part, it does. I think it does.
It says fee support, but it doesn't, the others say.
MWR provides reimbursement for the, to use that.
And MWR also provides fee support for military retirees and their dependents, but it is missing, so we could just add remainder of entry fee paid by MWR.
I would just put the word partial, honestly, I would say partial.
Entry.
Partial.
Partial reimbursement by MWR or something like that.
Yeah, or like, and partial, or something that just.
Subpartial entry fee paid by MWR, just so it's consistent.
Yeah, just so people think, oh, they're not getting this break, the whole fee is being paid, that, you know.
There's always complaints about.
People misunderstand completely.
The term fee support is, I think that's what it's intended to indicate, but, but, I mean, maybe being a little redundant isn't a bad thing.
Well, I know, I didn't understand that before, you know, and it seems like, why should, you know, should they get in free, or, you know.
And they're not.
Yeah, well, right, but that doesn't mean other people know that.
So, you put that, you put that somewhere. We didn't even put that.
All right, on the front part, any changes to the fee schedule at the bottom?
It looked to me like that was the same schedule as what we've been following.
It is, yeah. Special programming. Waiting in kids' pool?
I mean, that's what obviously tied to the lap, but 5:30 to 7:00 would be nice on Friday. And then depending on what we ended up doing on Tuesday and Thursday, if anything would weigh on the kiddie pool as well, I guess.
So, I'll just do, I'll make this easy now, anything on the rest of the schedule on the front page? If I have no further discussion, can I have a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve the schedule with the addition of lap swim on Friday, 5:30 to 7:00, and the same reflected on the kiddie pool.
Do I have a second? No second, motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the schedule as written with suggestions made by Commissioner Hoffmeyer presented to the aquatics director for her looking at in conjunction with timing and with availability of lifeguards.
So, we have a motion, so we have a motion to approve the schedule as written with suggestions for consideration by the aquatics director.
Yes.
To do with staffing and profit-loss.
I'll stick with that.
All right, we got a second, Commissioner Hoffmeyer, further discussion?
I would like to say that we always, I always look at it from the aspect, you know, who's going to pay for itself, who's going to lose money, how does that work, do we have enough staff to do it, and that's how we design this.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, next, employee handbook review, part two, Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
Okay, so, I have this thing that's got my handwriting, that's, and that's the order I wanted to take them in today. So, first, personal appearance was, we got that a couple meetings ago, but we didn't get it in time to look at it, so 7.6 personal appearance, the director rewrote it. Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we approve 7.6 personal appearance as written by the director with a slight change, there's a typo in here, in the second paragraph on the front page at the bottom line, no Speedo or bikini-type shorts are allowed, delete the period, put a small f for instructors or lifeguards, period.
Do I have, we have a second discussion?
I think there's also one template at the very top that is that.
Oh, yeah, during business hours, NWPPRD requires employees to present a clean and neat address.
So, amended two changes, and second still by Commissioner Hoffmeyer, thank you. Discussion.
I'm just, I'm recording the motion as, the motion to approve section 7.6 as written, fixing typos identified, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that, because that was super long, and we either got to get better at it, or I'm a booby, I want everyone to feel like the intent is captured.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the organizational charge, everyone got, did everyone have a chance to get it and look at it?
Yes, I just got to find it.
Is it in here somewhere?
It is in there somewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I.
So 7.6 personal appearance, the director rewrote it. Um, Mr. Chair, I would like to move that we approve 7.6 personal appearance as written by the director with a slight change. There's a typo in here in the second paragraph on the front page at bottom line, no Speedo or bikini type shorts are allowed. Delete the, um, period, put a small F for instructors or lifeguards, period.
Do I have, we have a second discussion?
I think there's also one template very tough that is that.
Oh, yeah. During business hours, NWPPRD requires employees to present a clean and uniform dress.
So amended two changes and second still by Commissioner Hoffmeyer. Thank you. Discussion.
I'm just, I'm recording the motion as, um, the motion to approve section 7.6 as written, fixing typos identified. I'm just, I'm just letting you know that because that was super long and we either got to get better at it or I'm, I'm a bit big. I want everyone to feel like the intent is captured.
I agree.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, the organizational charts. Everyone got, did everyone have a chance to get it and look at it?
Yes, I just got to find it.
Is it, is it in here somewhere?
It is in there somewhere.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Northwood Beach Pool Park Recreation District Organizational Chart as drafted by the director.
Can we just take the rules out of it and just say as presented or as, sorry, it just, okay, well, I'm going to take them out of there. Nothing personal. It's just, I, I, I see the, I see the wrinkly face, but I'm still trying to find mine and I have to write their motion at the same time. It's okay, I'll find it, but it's just, I'm, if we're going to do this for every single one of them, then I have a feeling there's going to be a lot of them. And so I'm going with brevity, so I'm just letting you know that. So, because I can't be looking for it while I'm writing. So, okay, um, so, can you repeat that?
Um, approve the NWPPRD organizational chart as written by the director. And I turn around, give a second to do that.
I second it too.
And Commissioner Harden, second.
I do have a change I wanted to make to them, actually. It shows the admin assistant is coming off the director and I would say it should have a dotted line from the Board of Commissioners because I, that person is going to take direct orders from us and we need to make a discussion about can we, what if, what if the Board of Commissioners doesn't like that person or they think that they're not doing a good job for us? It's like, the director's the only one who has higher and fire authority, but maybe that should be a difference.
Yeah, it, it would also need to be the job description. I have that note in the job description that it also would need to be updated for as well.
I like the dotted line.
That's a very military.
It's a corporate.
Okay, so I, I would like to amend my previous motion that we put a dotted line from the Board of Commissioners to the admin assistant. Yes.
So I guess my questions are if we think that we're doing away with some of these, are we then going to come back and, like, if there was potential that we would, are we kind of going to come back and revisit it?
Yes.
Okay. And then I'm not going to lie, I'm a fan of a, of a slightly more Board of Commissioners on the side kind of thing, but that's me. Do you understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Just meaning, so I, I realize that in the end of the day, I'm not going to vote no based on this, but, but so you can have Board of Commissioners to decide, pointing to the director. It's, it's just a little more, you know, we're, we're not technically, I mean, we are, we aren't, right?
I like that idea. I, I will make that amendment to have it over to the other side of the director in a box to the side as opposed to.
So we're not included in the pyramid, basically, is what you're saying.
So, yeah, it's a little more progressive in appearance and, and so, I mean, this is super traditional and, and I'm not knocking it because I asked for it. I did. Um, but, but it's a little more progressive in terms of, and it, I think it's actually a little more reflective of how it actually works.
Yes, I like that.
So how are you going to get the dotted line in? With the dotted arrow?
Where's it?
Oh, okay.
Oh, wow. It'll go like this. The, the box will move up here.
Oh.
And then just dotted line there.
Okay.
And then, and the solid, but it's a solid line from the director, whatever. And then our thing will go down here, like that. But I don't think, did anyone second that amendment?
Oh, I think if it's friendly, we can just, yeah. So the, the other thing is, does the custodial really work for the assistant maintenance director? Is that really accurate? Or is it really a?
I think more, it was, I was thinking the assistant maintenance guy should be off to the side and the custodial should, they should both be coming down.
Right, agreed.
With maybe a dotted line from the assistant maintenance, because he can give orders to them, but the one who's really in charge is the maintenance director.
Right, right, that's, because according to this, it's a.
Yeah, I know, it's a direct, I saw that and I was like.
Am I?
So, but are we looking at more of an org chart or is it more of like a matrix or matrix organization there where we actually have program managers and project managers and therefore you don't have to have that direct line of supervision?
I think, I think you're just doing this to make the change. I'm just saying that, Mr. Chair. Um, I know you are, and I would say if we were a slightly more mature in our organizational development, then I think that's an excellent idea. However, I think that would be difficult to implement at this time.
Understood.
However, I would suggest highly that you, uh, in your continuation on the board, you continue to look at that.
Oh, we didn't record that part.
I wanted to just mention that when I put this together, that's exactly the way I had it. And when I showed it to Matt, he decided that it should be the way it's written there. So just for your.
I, I think the thing that would concern me about that, though, is if the person is an assistant, that they're going to be here part-time. And so the expectation that they would always manage an, an ongoing daily activity wouldn't, I, I think that they, that there will be times when they would, but that they would not be the primary, um, response, there would not be a primary responsibility.
The blocks next to each other and then.
Yeah.
More of a triangle there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get that?
Further changes, comments, suggestions? All right, all in favor of passing the motion as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's passed. All right, or admin assistant job description.
Okay, now it's totally new and I, you know. So it's not in this package because it was new.
It's in one of these 20 packages. Admin assistant, here we go.
Which package is it?
Uh, you're asking. Uh, it's in the one that's loose?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, um, move that we approve the admin assistant job description as written.
Discussion. Agree.
I have discussion, but I'm kind of with the staffers.
Copy.
I do have, um, one question about.
Commissioner Harden.
So does this mean that under B, that we will not have to do minutes?
Yes.
Point of order. You can't approve yet. We're not finished with discussion.
Humble apologies.
This was something we, you, sorry, you weren't here. So we've discussed it and, um, it was so that we would have an administrative assistant for 10 hours to do board work and for 10 hours to do the director's work. And, um, it was basically, you know, the person that will come to the meeting and take the minutes, but they will also be responsible for getting together all the paperwork for our meetings and getting it to us in a timely fashion and all that stuff. That, um, so that's what that person will do, would do. And I think it'll make everybody's life easier and it'll make us a more effective board.
So I have some, uh, so all external communications, I felt like that was a little far reaching.
Okay.
So, uh, job description D.
Yes.
All, all external communications. I, I realize that maybe it's in, it's in it, but it was kind of like, yeah, probably not.
Okay.
I, I don't know how to, because to me then that person becomes our public relations person. And that's not what this job is intended to be.
No, okay. I, I will say, what I did is I took that away from the director of, it's Julie's job, whatever it was. Um, I just, and I took away the communications part. I took that.
And I think, um, I mean, we could reword that to be a little more, um, flexible.
For external communications as directed.
If we just get rid of all.
I, I think so, because I, I think, I think what I'm seeing is what I, what I interpreted this as and what I thought a part-time position was, um, I feel like there may be a little bit, it, it feels like there's a little scope creep.
Yep.
Um, and so that, that was concerning to me. Um, there, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So coordinate with director for external communications as directed, you know?
As assigned.
As assigned.
Is this person the PR person?
I'm sorry?
Is the person the PR person? No.
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 Right, so, yes. So there was another thing about administrative issues. Sorry, I, I took.
Handles administrative issues for the director as assigned.
So what's an administrative issue? I'm, I'm, I feel like that.
Good question, yeah.
I, I feel like, again, that, um, I, I, the word matters maybe, and again, I, meaning literally the word matters instead of issues because issues means that there was a problem and it depends on the scope of the problem.
And there's a decision-making responsibility that is, goes to.
Right, I mean, but I also didn't really know what an administrative issue was and that had me concerned again with the scope of this job, the scope and the qualifications of this job relative to, so I understand what I think the intent of this job is and I, and I don't want us to define it in such a way that it's like, oh, here you go, and it's like, oh, that's not, that, that's why.
No, I, I have no problem with administrative matters.
Okay, and that, okay, um, I think the qualifications, I think the ability to prioritize, so, um, sorry, this is, this is one of, of my pet peeves, multitude of tasks simultaneously, literally impossible. Um, meaning it's, you can actually only do one thing at a time. Um, but I understand, again, the intent of that, but I think regardless, there needs to be the ability to prioritize. Um, I, I think, I think that's a key thing because part of what we're saying is, is that you're going to in some way serve to master's, lack of a better word, um, and it's someone's going to have, as well as the operations part of things that are going to say, well, this needs to go out right now. Okay, well, then I need to table these things. So organization and prioritization, I think, are, are two really key things.
Okay, so delete ability to do multiple tasks simultaneously and put ability to prioritize assigned tasks?
I, well, I, I think you can change the, I mean, you can, I realize that I'm a little, I'll use the word special when it comes to the fact that those are the words that, that, that concern me because people are like, well, do you have the ability to multitask? I'm the person in a job interview to say, no, because that's a ruse. I, I get the intent of it, you know, I, I get it, you know, it's, so you can leave that, that's fine. It's, the intent is clear because we do expect there are a lot of things on this person's plate. It's about the ability to organize, um, to prioritize and to accept multiple things without having to do one at a time. I'm cool, I'm cool with leaving it. Um, I, but I think the prioritization piece.
I actually like the prioritize assigned task.
I do too. It was, it was just a matter of, you know, I was trying to think, we've got a person who's got to do, make sure 20 things get done today.
Yep.
And I want to make sure that they do the 20 if it's a board meeting night and, you know, that was why I.
This person isn't hired?
No. The job doesn't exist until we finish last meeting.
Um, the other thing, so working knowledge of, um, I think you need to add email. Um, I think it's, Facebook is, let's, let's be honest, folks. Facebook is a middle-aged plus social media, so we, it's, the true.
Right in here.
It's true story, it's true story. Um, it, that's what the demographics say, so I think if we want to even have a component of it, we say social media, um, platforms.
I just, we're on Facebook, I don't think we have any other social media.
Right, and, and some of us have thought for years that we needed them, um, but we don't currently have them, so that.
So is it social media the correct?
Social media platforms.
Okay, oh, platforms.
And I think, um, let's see, blah, blah, blah.
We're adding that. Yeah, that's what I'm.
Oh, paragraph B, qualifications.
We'll, we'll hand this to you when we, we'll read over it as, before we.
Um, uh, look at me, I'm starting my own notes, I'm trying here.
No, this is important, I'm glad, I'm glad you have these credentials.
Um, I'm just trying to figure out what that word is. Okay, I'll come back to that one. Um, the other thing that I think, and, and maybe we can leave it off, but I just want to propose it right now, even if we decide it doesn't go on this list, is maintains a master calendar. Um, so in other words.
Let's add it.
That's, so that's an awesome idea.
Job descriptions, this would be H.
Um, of, of district activities or something to that effect. So I'm going to use one example that's already come up this evening. Um, well, you know, we didn't know, you know, whatever, I'm, I'm not trying to characterize anybody, but, okay, we didn't know that we needed to have the schedule approved. Okay, well, then we should have a master calendar that eight weeks before that.
Yes.
Has it, has a thing on it that says this person needs to be doing this right now. This needs to be proposed at this board meeting. It's, it's just about tasking things in smaller pieces than, than trying to rely on our members.
So that's Microsoft Office because that's going to be our outlet and should be easy for everybody to use, just saying.
Yeah, and that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then let me just, let me just, um, responsive to, responsive to, sorry, I'm trying to figure out what this word is. I can't remember, so I'll just leave it. Let it go.
Responsible to the director and I put maybe directly tasked by the chairman and I, because I didn't want five different commissioners being able to go, do this for me, you know, and having them get so much direction. And I think if I feel like the person should do something, I should have to go through the chairman.
Chairperson.
Chairperson, sorry.
Chair.
I think, I like chairman.
Just chair, it's fine.
It's like, what's wrong with the language? Chair of Board of Commissioners. That's, that was my thought and I don't know if you guys all agree with that, but.
That's actually, it was, I had question marked the responsible to director only because I think, yeah, that's, because there's that language there that is, that's, that responsible to, however, yeah.
Yeah, responsible to the director, maybe directly tasked by the chair of the board. But then, and then that is the question, should we be able, should we, the board, if Rex or the director loves that person and we, the board of directors is like, that person is not getting done what we need to get done, we need somebody else? Do we have the option, should we have the option to fire that person?
In conjunction with the director, yes.
And that's why I think the responsible to the director and the Board of Commissioners or something to that effect, um, I think we should be, I think we should participate, we, whatever the makeup of we is, but someone on the board should participate in the hiring process.
Yes.
Okay, so maybe responsible to the director and the chair of the Board of Commissioners, just say, give them equal.
I would say and the board of directors and maybe, and maybe ta, and maybe directly tasked by.
That's good.
Okay, okay, so responsible director and the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Commissioners, maybe directly tasked by the chair of the Board of Commissioners.
Right.
I, I agree with all that and I think by, with that language there, I don't think the board's assuming firing authority. I mean, for instance, because it's such a part-time job, they may very well do something else for the district, but I think the board could certainly tell the director, hey, we need somebody else like this, right?
Yeah.
So I, I think that language covers.
I think the other part of the expectation then would be when this person's review is due, that there would be inputs from the board, which is unlike any other employee except, except for the director. So, so I think that's important too, right?
Yes. Do we need to put that in the, somewhere?
Is it divided equally in the hours?
It's supposed to be, that's what our, and it, did I, we did not put that in writing in this and maybe we should, but that was, as we've talked about it, we usually said 10 and 10 and, um.
Hours are variable, will include some evenings with equal distribution to the director and the board.
Ooh.
Distribution to the director and the board.
Distribution to the director and.
Scrubbed the pool right in 11 months. Do you know his name?
This guy?
The one that was scrubbing?
Yes.
He needs an award, Gold Star.
All right, further, further discussion?
Just that we are, um, a question as to whether we're amending the motion to include the updating, uh, the modifications as discussed.
Yes, I may, I amend my original motion to include all of the suggested changes.
Second.
Second, further discussion? Second, further discussion? All in favor of approving the Admin Assistant PD? Aye. Prove it. All right.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So, if we're going to have a Board member or more beyond the hiring, in the hiring process, when do we talk around that? Because that hiring process will begin soon.
Great, so when do you expect to begin?
Well, with the poster job, but I just want to know.
Right now, let me know.
Do you feel like I'm you?
Huh?
I'm talking about the Board person.
Yes.
And I think what he's saying is that you let us know when the dates are, and we listen to that. Right, because maybe not every, maybe only someone, you know, not everyone is one interested or two available. Hey, let's be honest.
Yeah, oh, that's very true.
I will make copies of that for everybody.
All right, next is Director job description.
Okay, these are all the other job, oh, sorry, the Director job description.
Director job description.
Yeah, sorry. And you should have one that's got lines on it showing what changes I made to it. Okay, it looks like this, it's got some writing down here on the modish.
Is it, is this Patrick?
Oh, I am, without staying here.
It was where she's second, it was a loose patch at her position, I like.
It says Appendix M at the top, Employee Job Descriptions.
Right.
And it's got scribbles on it.
I don't have one with the scribbles.
No, 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 you need this one, you need the one with scribbles.
We don't have those, Donna Sue.
I've got some scribbles, we don't-
No, we have Jenny's scribbles, but now we have-
We have Appendix, I have two Appendix Ms. with no scribbles. Oh, honey, well, maybe scribbles, well, some scribbles.
Hold on, no, we don't, those are Jenny's. Yeah, we need copies, thank you. No, they didn't.
So, it's the one that should have been, for some reason.
This one doesn't have anything on the Director one.
Oh, and maybe that's it, I took aside-
Correct, the first and second page, but there are no scribbles on mine.
Right, right, okay.
So, I have, we copy it similar thing.
He's doing that right now.
Okay, he's doing it, my fault, sorry. Someone organized.
You are. Christ, I think I lost my agenda. No, it's right here. I think we were overambitious with this agenda.
What's that with the agenda?
I think we were overambitious with this agenda.
Yeah, we are.
You can take a reset.
Well, one of the things that, I'm not trying to leave him out of the discussion, if I can just, maybe, and we can go back, but some of the things that I proposed as bylaw changes, I realized once I actually, I had already had that all formulated, and I realized that some of them would not actually be bylaw changes, they're probably actually job description changes. And so, I'm wondering if this Director one, I mean, is it worth waiting on or having the discussion about? Meaning, I think there's a larger, I think there's some things, but it's also a larger discussion.
We can do that now, because it is, in fact, his job description is in the bylaws. So, if you want to change the by, if you want to change his job description, which you do, sort of, then that could be discussed now or could be discussed when we get to the bylaws.
Well, and I think what I'm trying to say is, for, I mean, nothing personal, but at the rate we're going, we'll be here for another three or four hours. I can't do that. And so, I was trying to find ways to, maybe I'm, maybe I just need to just say, "Let it be," and we'll figure out when we have, come to a stopping point. I was trying to be strategic about it, maybe it's, maybe it's not.
So, we're not going to change the agenda right now. We'll go and we may table what we don't get to tonight-
Got it.
At 8:30.
Okay.
And we'll take a look at that at 8 o'clock, because we've been at this for an hour and a half.
Appreciate it.
And I believe an hour and a half.
And I don't want to hold this up anymore, sorry, thank you.
Yep, all right, so-
So, the Director's job description, B, just with the head swim coach no longer being there, that just automatically went away. And Paragraph J, to perform such other duties as the Board may determine. It says by resolution, I didn't get that. So, we just deleted the by resolution? I did. And then, to add, M, the Director will be authorized to sign contracts on behalf of the district, subject to final Board approval. And I discussed that with Rex, and that's what he wants. I think that's good, you know, and that just basically means the Board approval is required for signatures or for contracts. And then, and to organize and schedule special events or programs. So, and then, in qualifications, experience working in a government organization or equivalent. So, Mr. Chair, I recommend we approve the Director job description as modified.
Second, further discussion?
And I'd point out, is, this will change the bylaws, that section of it, because his job description is listed.
Well, it won't change the bylaws. The bylaws are the prevailing, the bylaws are the prevailing document, and there is a process you must follow to change the bylaws.
Right, okay, no, 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 you're right.
So, changing the bylaws would change this.
Yes.
But not the other way around.
Okay, but, so, had, when we change this, we need to make sure that those changes then get changed into the bylaws?
And the process, just to reiterate it for anybody who isn't up to date with that, the process for changing bylaws is you must raise it in new business, and you must vote on it in unfinished business. So, in other words, so that people have time to consider the change. I believe it's also a two-thirds vote, right? So, I'm saying it because that's, I want everybody to make sure we're all under the same expectation.
So, do we need to, does this need to be tabled, then? Because it's, okay, because it will, it would effectively, okay. So, let's table this, but everyone knows those are the changes that I have put forward, and Rex and I discussed it. Okay, all right.
So, moving on to the Director of Client Services?
This one, I just, I wanted to lump them all together, because I didn't, there weren't that many changes that I made to them. So, I would like to make a motion that the job descriptions for Director Finance, Director Client Services, Client Services Specialist, Director of Aquatics and Programs, Aerobics Instructor, Senior Lifeguard, Lifeguard, Swim School Instructor, Director of Maintenance Facilities, Groundkeeper, Maintenance Assistant, Custodial Crew Member, Adult Swim Instructor and Kayak Instructor, be approved as modified in the package.
Second.
Thank you. And then, I had, I have not had a chance to look at Jenny's suggested changes. So, I'm gonna, and I didn't make any changes to the people that worked for her, because I didn't know what changes should be made. Trying to find them.
She actually made changes to other ones, too.
Oh, does she?
Is that what?
Yeah, there's one package that has Donna Sue's writing in it, Commissioner Holly's writing in it, and there's one packet that has Jenny's writing in it.
It's the one that says, Play Job Descriptions.
Yeah, well, I actually have three of those, so. And I know I have, no, no, it's okay, no, oh, thank you, I need a fourth one? Thank you, that's, please, that's, then I'll have the perfect quad. So, if there's anything here that, I'm seeing these marked up ones for the first time. Am I the only one for which that is the case?
Might not be marked up at all.
The ones that are marked up by Jenny, I have not seen it till-
Well, but I have ones that you've marked up, and I have ones that she's marked up, right? So, have we seen any of these before?
Yes, you saw, the ones that I sent, I sent to you guys all the copies weeks-
We saw the ones from-
Okay, but it doesn't look like this, I saw things in red.
Right.
Okay, but, so that's exactly the same.
Yes.
Because I'm trying to figure out what the delta is here, and if the answer is there's none, or Wendy, you're the only one that's lagging behind, and everyone else has seen all the changes, I'd say, "Hey, go for it." But I kind of feel like now we're reconciling-
We are.
So, I don't, right, and is now really, this isn't even about the time thing. This is about the, well, we're saying we're going to do this, but we have this input over here, shouldn't, should we take the time-
Final call.
To integrate those two. I know we want this done, but at some point, we have two different sets of inputs, in some cases for the same thing. It just seems like it bears consideration.
The Senior Lifeguard is the only one that I see more than one of your little changes.
Oh, no, no, look at the Maintenance Assistant one?
Yeah, but I didn't, I made no changes to Maintenance either.
Okay, so Commissioner Singleton's comment is, do we need to shift through these? And I don't feel comfortable flying through Jenny's suggested changes and making sure that I doubt in any way that yours have changed, because I know how thorough you are. But that we don't have to, you know.
All right. Table, table the rest of these job descriptions to the next meeting as well.
And we could, or we could consider having way better written on changing the thing.
No, let's not, let's just table it and do it next time.
So, Mr. Chair, do we have a groundskeeper as a job for this district?
Isn't it, yes, didn't you say you hired a groundskeeper?
Okay, we actually have, because previously, we had, we outsourced that.
It was New Leaf was doing it.
Right, who was said that, whoever's single was here. Well, we outsourced it.
The same company that, that we used for, I don't know, 17 years or something, is, the guy retired who was aiming something. From the same company, we have our groundskeeper now.
Okay, so it's not an employee of this district?
Well, yeah, he's on our payroll.
Yes, okay, then we say he's from that company. I guess I'm not understanding something.
So...
Do we pay him, or do we, do we pay a company, or do we pay him?
We pay him an hourly rate.
Okay.
How many hours a week does he work?
Four.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, I just didn't, now, something, because that was, yeah.
No, you need to go get water, you want me to break, or you good?
I'm okay, well, I have David.
Okay, so-
I know how to dial my woman.
Table, and I will get that out.
I'm sorry, Donna Sue.
That's okay.
Business plan review.
But we-
Salary classification.
Can we, can we really, so, our expectation is, we have two, I'm just trying to like, make sure that I do the right activity so that we can get this done. We have two marked up copies, and one of which we received from you, and we've already read. But now, we have a second one, and so, our thing is to come to the table. We're not going to get any more inputs.
Right, no more inputs.
No more inputs. Our thing is to come to the table at the next regular meeting, unless we decide that it's happening at a different time. And we say, "This is what we want." Okay, I'm just making that expectation quick.
So, I have a question, right?
Employee job descriptions.
What do you want, anything from me for that?
Okay, I don't think we need anything, that's what I was trying to make sure that, or that we didn't get somehow, I don't know, I haven't thought about this.
I only have one copy with one set of corrections, so do I need to get another copy with the other?
It looks like she's got Commissioner Holly, so if you've got one of Jenny's?
That's, oh, you know, I got, this is the other one. Did I take you out of that? Oh, so you're saying that and this make up what they're talking about? Everything.
And that's, the only one we've approved tonight was the-
Admin Assistant.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we don't have to go over that one?
Yes.
And that, do we want to talk about the pay scale? Do people have a chance to look at that, or do you want to table that?
You're number one. Here it is.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the salary classification of pay scale as drafted by the Director.
Yes. Second, discussion? Yes, ma'am.
That's the- That was sort of like a list appears.
No, this is not the one, this is the old one.
Oh.
The accurate one is, the top is 70, not 77.
Okay.
Oh, okay, none of these are right, then.
Okay, so...
This is too confusing.
On page?
So, Mr. Chair, without, I'm not even waiting at this point. I think we need to begin to implement a system by which things are called drafts, things have dates on them, we have revision numbers, because I, and I think, I think that policy could come from the staff, but we need something, because this is not, this is not, this is not working.
No. So, Rex, I'm looking at a pay scales, pay schedule for employees.
Yep.
It's got 58 to 70,000 on top, is that the correct one?
That's the one. The reason the other one's there is so you could make a comparison between them.
Okay.
And we're not sure if the, the older one has ever really been appropriated.
It was not.
It was not.
So... Can you pass that down to Commissioner Singleton, so she may look at that, please? So, the draft?
I have the old one.
Okay, and that in your left, right hand is the draft?
Okay, and do-
Is what the motion is on.
Do you want me to take a picture of that?
No, you may keep it, I'll look at this one.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to approve the pay schedule for employees revision from the Director, and a second, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
May I please withdraw in a second?
You may. Do we have a second?
If you don't like it?
It's not bad, we'll talk later.
Oh, okay, I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Holden seconds, discussion?
Sorry, I'm trying to, I don't know if I, well, for me, I think, there are some things on here I'm not comfortable with. And additionally, I think we would need to understand what the impacts of some of these decisions are, because there are immediate impacts, or rather, salary planning discussions that would need to happen. We have, so, for example, we have, we would have an immediate inconsistency with how we've defined, or at least previously defined, the Director of Aquatics as it could be salaried or it could be hourly, and then we have just a salary range and no hourly rate for that, as one example. The other example, and I'm not trying to make this all about Wendy's rules- The other example, and I'm not trying to make this all about Wendy's rule, but I think that the starting for the director is too high. I believe that if, again, if in my world, a perfect world would be that we have a director and we have an executive director, that previously was actually pretty close to the high point of the director previously. I think there needs to be a greater range there. And so for me, I'm not comfortable saying it starts at $58,000 a year. I think that you, even if you never exercise that lower end, because you find people who are qualified, I think you have to allow yourself a range of some sort. And part of that is also looking at total compensation. So, for example, in this case, the director has other benefits. Right now, nobody else does. And so, I mean, I think there's a factor there, too. So for me, I feel unsure that this is good to go as it is.
Okay, so you didn't get a chance to look at this? Is that... Everybody didn't? Do you want to table this one and come back to it at the next?
I looked at a lot of different things. I may have looked at this one. I honestly, I thought that I had, but I also have this one. So that's part of the confusion, is receiving the same thing a couple of times. And I'm not faulting anybody for it. I'm just saying it's confusing, and I'd rather not make a decision while I'm confused.
Agreed. And before I table this, I do have some discussion points, if I may. Why did we settle on 15? We're not at 15 yet as a state for minimum wage? It's at $12 and...
13, 15.
It's going to be on January, it's going to be 13.
It's January of this year, it's because it's $15 minimum wage?
13, 13, and then it'll go to 15 after that.
When does it go to 15?
I think for the following year, I think. Right, is that right? It's something like that.
It's incremental. Yeah, it's incremental.
January is 13, 15.
This January is 13, 15. We're jumping to $15. I can tell you right now, that's part of...
No, 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 where are you getting 15?
Right here.
No, no, it starts at minimum wage, and then with the... This is the high end.
Never mind. I just looked down and saw dollar signs. I didn't...
No, we start everybody at minimum wage.
Sticker shock.
Except for, you know, those people that are directors.
So, minimum wage is 13, 15, and this January?
Yeah, and until then, it's $12, is it? It's $12 for me.
$12.
Yeah, so whatever it is now.
See, and when I did this, I mean, I did that with all of the positions, except when I got up to the director's salary, it would have been like 82 or something. And it's like, boy, I can't do that. The maintenance person was higher than the director. So, it was like I had to adjust down.
I think, so you researched the value of the director's position, and is 70,000 a good maximum?
You know, there's so much information. It depends. It really depends. And you can't... If you do the state of Washington, you know, we're not comparable to the state of Washington.
Oh, wow.
Because you're looking at 127,000. That was kinds of numbers, so...
So what are our comparables?
Comparables are island, you know, here on the island. Yeah.
So, I know when we do comparables, right, we look at like-minded communities, right? So, you look at other communities that have the same population, the same median income, right, and then the same service delivery. So for us, we look at pools, parks, and recreation districts that are in communities that have the similar median income, same type of service delivery, a pool facility, maybe some ball fields, a dog park, you know. It's going to be hard to find the same thing, but you look for like districts. And then you say, what do they pay? And that's what we should base this on. What do we pay? What do they pay their directors, right? What do they pay their maintenance folks? And the standard, industry standards, is at least three comparables within the state. Sometimes you have to go out of state to find similar comparables. The challenge there is, if you go to our neighboring states, right, Oregon, you face a totally different challenge there with, you know, what do they pay for state taxes and so on. So, I think that's what I would like to see in something like this, have more information on comparables for the director's position, the maintenance position, the aquatics, and those types of things. And I would say that there's the Park and Recreation District Association might even assist us with that. So I'm pretty sure they do that on a regular basis, or would have somebody that would have that information.
They probably do, but I don't believe that we're currently members, so...
Oh, we're not currently members?
I don't think that we are, to my knowledge. So, I mean, we don't see it on a budget. I don't know that we ever have been. I mean, maybe we were once.
It used to be.
Okay, and in my time on this board, we have not been. So, I mean, while that may be also a consideration, just due to the resources available, you know, the other thing, and again, I'm not just trying to push my own agenda here, but I think if we end up taking a serious look at a director versus an executive director, meaning a career path of progression, then you end up with two scales that overlap. And you hire a director, and then based on time and job performance, et cetera, you promote somebody to an executive director. Again, I'm not trying to change the subject, but that's what I see, and that's what I would be, that's what I will lobby for personally in a different discussion.
Okay, I'm sorry. So we have a pay, we have a motion on the floor.
No, I withdraw the motion, people.
Withdraw the motion.
People, let's table it.
Pay schedule's been tabled for a regular meeting.
Yeah, so that people have a chance to look, really look at.
But it sounds like we're, is there an, there's an action item that we're looking for kind of a benchmark for that?
Yeah, I would like to see comparables for this.
Would it be approved to have both director and executive director in those comparables?
I think one might, would be get the other.
I would say right now, have a wide-range scale of comparables, where they have directors, like where the setup is like ours.
Well, I mean, it's pretty different in some places where the director is pool director. Other places, you know, it's...
And I would bring that information to the board. And I would say that that information would be helpful for the board going forward, that if we need to address our bylaws, then we do so, and we do so informed. Okay?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify for the minutes, are we expecting those comparables for the director only at this point? Is that what we're asking for?
I would say I'd like to see comparables for as many positions as possible. That's a huge task, and that's why I say as possible.
Mr. Chair, can I... Sorry, can I just... I would actually ask for it for the senior staff. I mean, I think that's what I, I mean, I think the other one, I think that's maybe...
So director of client services, finance, aquatics, maintenance.
You saw that he, the director gave us some numbers before.
Yes.
He sent them out to all of us. No, 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 not this one. He did a comparable, a comparative test. Do you ever see that? Here, this one. This is Washington State average pay rates and salaries.
Okay.
That he sent to us.
And is that for the, say, Park and Rec industry, or just overall?
It's Washington State, and they said, like, the pool director and aquatic director, maintenance supervisor. So they had the files. He sent it out to everyone. He sent it out to...
Department of Labor and Industries, or where did this one come from? Rex?
Didn't you send it to everybody, or did you send it to me?
Fortress, if you have the SD.
No, we had talked about it.
Yeah, and I, but I thought you sent it to everybody. That was not...
Oh, okay. Yeah, this is, this is from Indeed, you know, that's the ones that I think.
Indeed.
Indeed. It's a headhunter kind of thing.
Oh, okay. So let's, right now, because we're only a month out, if you could just give us the senior staff. All right? Okay, tabled with senior staff due for the next meeting. All right. What else on the employee handbook?
We're done with the employee handbook.
Thank you. Business plan review.
Can I just thank, I realize we're not where we want to be. I just wanted to say thank you, because it's, we really are on the cusp of it. It's just trying to make sure that we're making the right decisions.
And you're completely right. It's fine.
Just your efforts are absolutely appreciated, even if it doesn't feel that way at this moment. They are appreciated. Thanks, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I think it's safe to say that, as echoed by the entire board. You'll let me know when you're ready.
Yes.
You're ready. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to give you a time check.
Thank you very much.
Which is not quite, but since we are not on a subject.
All right. Business plan review is...
Don't know of anything.
Nothing? All right, we're done with business plan review. Clover Valley proposal review, did we hear anything back from the insurance company? From anybody?
Well, except that I did get two names, two lawyer names, to get a hold of instead of trying to go through.
And we don't have a motion on the floor for this right now, do we? Okay, good. All right, budget review. It is in the director's, I know, I brought my copy.
Oh, is it from last time?
Yes, so budget versus actual.
I have lots of extra copies of this.
I don't count them.
August 22nd? You had to give that?
Oh, wait, that's why, that one was mine. It's okay.
All right, before we start the budget review, looking at the agenda, knowing that we're skirting 8 o'clock. We have budget intern director review, which I believe, unless there's... So I'm going to go down these real quick. Budget review, can this be tabled until September? Any objections to this being tabled until the September regular meeting?
The budget?
Excuse me, yes, ma'am.
No, sir.
Any other objection, are there any objections to this being tabled till the regular scheduled meeting in September?
No.
Shane? Tabled. Intern director review, tabled until September? Tabled. Review of district bylaws. Should we table that? Any objections to tabling that until September? Tabled. Hiring new director. Any objections to tabling this?
Could we have a discussion about how we're going to do it, and at least set a timetable? I mean, it's like, we have half an hour, so I think we can at least go for... We should move forward with this. If we wait, we're waiting another month. And don't we want to hand to the board on the 1st of January, here's your director?
So, I think what I'm hearing is that include, at least to begin our discussion.
Yes.
Two things.
Yes.
I'm probably not going to, I'll be here, I'm probably not going to partake in this discussion much, and possibly may refuse myself from voting on it. I'm also not going to be here during the September board meeting, so just little pieces of info.
Hiring new director, so let's talk about the process real quick. Process in the past is pretty well-defined and delineated by... I think we got the policies in particular. What was it in here?
I don't think so. Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I actually thought that it was in the bylaws, but it isn't. And so I don't know if it, if it mistook appeared at some point in time, because the whole thing about, like, advertising in the Seattle Times. So, was the, like, that was part of the changing, and I know everybody received the email message from me. That was one of the things, because part of it was like, let's stop constricting ourselves. I can't find it, so I feel slightly crazy, but I remember that it was there.
No, I remember it too, and it's no longer there.
It's not in, it's not in bylaws.
It must have gotten to you.
I can't, I mean, I looked for it, and I mean, yes, I scanned it to a certain extent, but I was like, I don't, I don't find it anywhere.
It was very specific. Was it a resolution?
Maybe, maybe that's what it was, but no, that would be so weird, though.
I wonder, three years ago, so when we had a bylaws committee and we did a bunch of stuff, I wonder if it got removed.
Well, I mean, that's what I was trying to, and I was trying to think, like... I was trying to remember, because obviously, you know, the 2011, I think it was, or 2012 effort. And, but I don't think that was it. It was after that, in like 14 or 15, that it was still there, because I remember the fact that part of what we bemoaned was how expensive it was to utilize, because we were required to utilize this process that wasn't actually yielding the results that we wanted. And now, three or four years later, it's even more out of date than putting it in print.
Early in the year in '16, Commissioner Fort and McCaslin worked on the bylaws quite a bit. And I think that might be when it came out.
Nope, the only thing that, the only, there was just one small change, because there wasn't, there wasn't anything really, like, substantial, if you want to call it that. That's where I'm like, I'm looking to see if it's something. Because I don't want us to do the wrong thing, but I couldn't find it. So I was like, well, if it's not in our bylaws, I mean, I think it could be, we could at least talk about, hey, what's the process? Because that concern was, if we're handcuffing ourselves to an expensive process that is ineffective, we got to stop doing that.
Yeah.
You know, that was the, that was the whole thing.
And it's not in the employee handbook. I don't, I don't think it was. So, and it's not in the bylaws now, so...
And that was part of the, that was part of the want to change it, was for that very reason, because, again, it's ineffective.
So, I have two concerns. One is where do I have to go?
Right.
Because it was very defined.
Agreed.
And... B, we need to check the resolutions to make sure it's not a resolution.
So, is that a staff thing?
Rex? Can you check, so between now and September, unfortunately, can you check the resolutions to ensure that we don't have a resolution that has a hiring process for the director? Because we need to ensure that we're not going against a resolution we have passed.
Where are the masters?
There's a book.
There's a book.
There's a book.
There is a book here.
But there's a bunch of it. I've been trying to review them and...
My concern is, and I believe it's shared by all of us, is that there was a defined process. We've gone through it unfortunately a couple of times, and so it was cumbersome.
Well, it's outdated.
Yes, very much so. And so, since we're talking about this, if no resolution, as we have given the director a task, thank you for letting us add more to your plate, for us, I would say we need to be prepared to move forward in September with a defined process. So when we go to discuss this in September, we should all come with all of the ideas that we want to talk about and discuss for the process for hiring new director, unless we hear there is a resolution from the director. Thank you, sir.
I'm willing to sit here and read the...
Thank you for assisting. I appreciate it. All right, number nine, contract considerations. Directory.
The only one I have for you to look at tonight is the end where...
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask a question?
Please.
So, so in terms of actual usage versus expected versus reserved, what do we do with that? Let's say there's an extra lane, what do we do with it? Or is that not, what do we do with that extra space?
If they use an extra lane is what you're asking?
No, I'm asking if they, so it says, based on actual, it said if they, lane usage can be dropped, they will not be billed for it.
Right.
So, what happens with that extra lane? What do, what do we do to recoup, to recover?
Well, it depends on how much time it takes to work.
Okay, so.
It's not like we can just plug something into one lane that they're not using.
And, and that's exactly why I'm asking the question, because basically, if we're saying we're going to reserve it for you, so I think that there should be a notice requirement too. I would ask for a notice requirement, because otherwise, yeah, we just cancel practice for today, and so we have no income, but we also have an empty pool. That, that's a concern for me. As, as one example, I just, I think a notice requirement, or otherwise, I think they should be billed. It's, it's similar to many other things, you know, if I don't get onto a plane, I don't necessarily get my money back, or whatever. I mean, you don't need to give me more examples, you understand the point. I, I would prefer a notice requirement, that's.
30 days, what do you think?
I don't, I don't think it needs to be 30 days, but, I mean, I think, I think something, I don't know what I think is reasonable, I just feel like there should be an expectation, because otherwise, really what we're saying here is that they could change at any time, and that we are footing the bill for that, no matter what, and I feel like there should be shared responsibility. That's what I'm, that's what.
Have you gone down to number, the last one on this page?
24 hours. Yeah, it's too tight on the other thing.
And I almost think that if they're renting three lanes, that's what they're renting, regardless of notice, because you can't just say, okay, we're going to have aerobics in that lane without, you know, without having it scheduled.
Yeah, and lapses are going to show up if they know that it's not a lap sometime.
You know, I, I mean, I think that's reasonable. If you want three lanes, that's what you're paying for.
And I think that if we, if we feel like we can reasonably accommodate it with a certain amount of notice, I would ask you, what do you, what do you think that notice is? Because I think, Mr. Chair, I think that bottom one is actually, it covers a portion of things, so the 24 hours, but that's, practice time changes, which I, I guess, I would ask the question, by how much? So, I mean, to me, it sounds like they will notify us, well, we have a schedule, so, meaning we have a, we have a schedule, so I'm, I'm a little concerned about that part too, but cancellations and within 24 hours, that's just a cancellation, that's not a reduction, right?
Gotcha.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, so to me, those are two different things, because what we've said, I feel like we've said in this second paragraph on number two is, ah, NBD, you can use it, you cannot use it, if you don't use it, we're not going to charge you for it, but we're incurring costs during that time, and we deserve at least either the notice to re, to reschedule another activity in that space, or to be paid for it. That's what I believe.
But what activity can you schedule?
Well, that's the point, that's the point.
And, and I, and I would leave it to me, that's part of the, if, if, if you believe, you know, I would say, I would ask the staff that, and say, if you believe there's something you can schedule, then do it, right? Because then, if, you know, if somebody, if somebody can, if I bought a thing to, to, you know, I can't think right now, but if I bought a ticket to something, and I go, oh, I can't use it, some places have the policy that like, okay, but if we can find somebody to take your spot, if you will, then, then we'll reimburse you. Others have a, too bad, you know? And, and so I feel like if we can reasonably accommodate, because really, part of what we're in the business of is getting people in the pool, and so if there's extra space, I, maybe we can't. If, if the staff thinks that we can't, okay, then, then maybe we're not quite as forgiving, but that's where I think, hey, I, I think we need to, we need a reasonable policy, and I feel like this doesn't represent that toward, I, I think we're not protecting ourselves enough, or not looking out for the taxpayers' money quite enough with the flexibility here.
No, right. It seems like if I was speaking for in-laws, they would say, daily, that can fluctuate how they're paying.
Yeah.
Like, 10 kids showed up today, we need all three lanes, but tomorrow, two kids showed up, and each day, they're figuring out how many lanes they're using over three they've already reserved. That's really financially disastrous.
So what do, what do we do with this? What do we, I'll get to you in a sec. I'm sorry, I'm going to chomp it. What do we do with the swim team, the high school boys and the high school girls?
That is, actually, in the meeting on Friday, what we talked about is a settlement, you know, based on what they say, you know, like, just what you're talking about. In other words, it's like you lease a car, you know, you lease a car for a certain length of time, and you don't go like, oh, you know, I'm not going to really use the car this week.
Right, I only drove it, I didn't drive it on Saturday.
Theirs has always been, I read their contract, so theirs has always been, certain number, they get three lanes for these days, these times, and they pay the whole amount. It's like, there's no, yeah, we'll decide on the day how many lanes we're going to use.
How many girls showed up?
Yeah. And they're crowded, crowded, crowded when they're swimming.
I would, I would say that I would feel very comfortable with going back to the tax rate and saying, yeah, I, I agreed with the contract that treated the high school and the private swim team equally.
So, yeah.
I, I, the school district would appreciate that, and BHBC, I, I don't even want to label swim team, but anybody would appreciate that. In our contract, here's another thing, because I highlighted this, proper functioning of the Colorado timing system. Holy cow, Batman. The timing system we have is a little old.
It is.
So, the computer, the software, the timing pads, the board to run it, is that, do we agree to provide that to the swim, the high school girls and boys swim team?
I am looking, I don't know what, because this is, you know.
Yeah, it's on page two, number five, the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph down. What do we do for the high school boys and girls swim team? Because I know they use the Colorado timing system also.
My experience is that they like it when they have it, because many pools don't for high school.
Right, they like it when they have it for high school, but it's not required.
Right. That's what they do. No one else does it.
Yeah, it's not required for high school swim meets. They only districts and states, they're allowed to use the timing system, the, the two timers, the dual timers. USA Swimming, for it to be a sanctioned meet, for USA Swimming, requires a timing system plus the two watches. However, are we saying we're going to upkeep a Colorado timing system for, you know, our police? Can we afford to do that right now? That's my question.
No.
Yes. My direct, okay, so the director's telling us no.
So, I changed that, because before I said we were responsible for that.
Oh, thank you.
We were a collaborative effort.
Yeah.
For which part were you expecting?
Page two.
So Rex, correct me if I'm wrong. We're looking at a 10 to.
First paragraph.
On the short end.
Number five, fourth paragraph.
We're looking at anywhere between a $20 to $50,000 price tag on a Colorado timing system.
Yeah, yeah, each, each touchpad is $1,200.
District that we just got up and running.
Right.
No, I don't feel comfortable with that in there at all.
First swim team objection.
Yeah, I, I don't feel that's comfortable in there at all. My suggestion, unless there's objection from any board, you want it, you provide it. We've got what we've got, but we're not going to repair it. We're more than happy to set it up for you. If it works, great.
Well, I don't know if we're happy to set it up for you.
No.
Because they don't want to set it up.
Okay.
Right, I would, yeah.
There you go.
But we could leave that paragraph out.
But it's their sole responsibility.
I would, I would just delete that.
I would delete the paragraph.
Delete the paragraph, there you go.
And then also delete the lane time will be billed on actual usage.
Oh, paragraph.
Delete that too?
Yes.
Well, I think there needs to be, I mean, I think we have to say something about it, so I think whether it's to model the high school, like, there needs to be something about that. Either it needs to, the language needs to change, or it needs to be specified.
With the timing system, is that what you're trying to say?
No, 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 we're talking about, sorry.
We were talking about the lane time will be billed.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
If they use additional lanes, absolutely. They should be charged, but they're not going to.
No, it's till January.
They don't get a.
July 31st of 2020.
Right.
How long is the high school's good for?
Their contract.
It's an annual.
It's, yeah, it's an annual.
Because I would say, here is our contract for the high school, you're more than happy to sign the contract that mirrors that.
Do you, I mean, how do you, how do you feel about that?
May mention that tonight.
To me, it sounds.
Every time I.
Okay, so you're, can we, guys, can we have one meeting? Sorry, I'm just, so, okay, so you're, you would be okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I just want to be sure that you didn't have reservations about it. If we're, we're asking you to do that, that you're like, yep, that makes sense to me. Okay.
Do you agree, yeah, it is a good point. Do you agree as a director that we should have one contract for the high school and a private swim team?
I think there are differences, but yes.
Okay.
It's equitable.
So, the board, the board is willing to entertain a contract, approval of the contract from you, and the BHBC or whomever that mirrors the high school? Okay.
So, are we, I'm trying to, I'm trying to.
Do we have a motion yet?
We actually don't have a motion.
There's no motion on the table. We're talking about contract considerations from the director.
Well, and, and I think since we, I mean, we haven't had one, and we're having a discussion, the, I guess my question is, so we had a discussion before about responsibilities, so are we, would, would we be, and maybe this is the motion, but are we saying we would, we would be supportive of that and allowing that, or are we saying, okay, sure, stop.
So, I would entertain a motion. Go ahead, Shane.
I, I move that the director brings forward a contract between the district and the BHBC that is equitable to the October high school contract.
Second.
Discussion. Yep, yep, yep.
I was, oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead. I was just going to say that since they want this to start the 9th of September, sometimes when, when we have to sign contracts, we do it online, and that way, if we got a contract, if we have to approve it.
We don't.
No, we don't, we're saying we don't have to approve it.
That's correct.
As long as it's equitable. Okay.
I, I think the only thing I would, what would ask us to entertain is that, that someone, and maybe it's the chair, just reviews it. Like, I would be, nothing personal, it's not personal, it just would be someone on the board, God eyes on it too, and I'm not trying to saddle you in.
Are you just?
It's not currently in the motion, but I, I would, I would feel, because then that way, it's, if, at the end of the day, we're like, oh, I'm not comfortable with that, then we're not just looking at you, we're also looking at you.
You're telling me that? You're pointing it down, no. Well, this, she's done. I'm not delegating anything.
So, for clarification, I was under the impression that this was, I don't know if it was from before, had been enacted, but it's the approval, it's the board approval of contracts, I thought that's what the outgoing procedure was at this point.
Well, as I, so when, when Pat asked about approval, I just looked at the signature page, and all of our signatures aren't on it.
Well, you know why? Because it was left off, you know? When I told Jenny, that copy I gave her was on there.
And, and I don't think it actually necessarily requires all five of our signatures.
It's just one.
If we, if we approve, well, but if we approve the, like, we basically say, we're supporting your, your signature on this, right? I mean, then it's, there's a board decision that you sign it, or something to that effect. Is that, go ahead.
So would you be willing to amend the motion, to say that the board would support a contract that the director approves, that is, that has the exact same consideration and language? To have, who had, that had the same, or the similar, similar considerations?
Yeah, he's used the word equitable.
Or equitable, equitable to the high school contract.
Or, or could we leave the motion as is, but to be verified by a board chair? I mean, because we've moved the.
Sure.
Point of that, just to be verified by a board chair?
Are you saying?
Sure.
You can say a board member in case he's busy fighting fires somewhere.
I can't get that lucky this year.
Well, then, we're going to have to.
Are we okay with board member then? Just, I mean, so, we're, that's, our expectation is it'll go to the chair, because that's how normally things work, but in the absence of that, we'll find a resource.
This is my trading, just keep that in mind, this is my trading.
So, my question is, that if we, if, let's say we have five other contracts, do I need board approval on those contracts, or not?
Currently, you do not, because we did not approve the job description. That's going to be talked about next week, next month.
But, but if it's our general consensus that, that's, I mean, I'm just saying, there's the letter of the law, and there's how do we think we should be doing things, and so, yes, technically, that is accurate.
I'll make it easy. Do you see, how many contracts do you see coming up between now and our September meeting?
One, two, three.
Which are?
What?
Which are?
High school, the physical therapy.
NWR?
Maybe. That's the only ones I can think of.
Sorry, big ones.
Yeah. I mean, from the beginning, it's always seemed strange to me that I'm signing checks, I'm signing payroll, I'm signing contracts, and not even the director. I'm not even, you know, for a long time, it wasn't even registered in the bank. Tom?
Yes.
Just my opinion. Yes, I said I wasn't going to be here for the September meeting, and maybe I'm lucky, but holy smokes, I think we need to spend some meeting, a lot of stuff stacked up.
I don't mind you through it in September.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff stacked up.
So, can, when you expect, do we have the contracts, have those come to you yet for review?
No.
Okay, so when do you expect to have those for review?
Well, tomorrow, I'm going to do the high school, I mean, Friday, I'm going to do the high school. And by, in a week, I could do this fairytale season. I don't know about Navy.
I'm looking for October 1st, though.
And Navy likes it if they, if they drag it out, drag it out, and then they make you, try and make you do exactly what it was the last time, because it saves them money. And yes, Navy, I'm talking to you. Maybe the answer is we get the contracts centralized, we all review them at home, and then if we have an issue, say to the chair, we need to talk about this.
I think that's the best way.
Just all contracts verify with the chair.
Right. I think we say, yeah, we send them, when you have the contracts, please send them out for the board to review, and then if I, do not give me comments on the, on your concerns, please, that would be an OPMA by. concerns, please, that would be an OPMA violation. However, if you feel the need to discuss the contract, and I have more than one board member get back to me that they want to discuss the contract, then we will set a special meeting. Are we all in agreeance for that?
Yep.
Sure, as, as long as, because I mean, I think the other part would be if they're just general questions, I mean, couldn't we just ask?
By all means, go right to the director.
Right, I mean, because part of it is, nobody wants to have a special meeting, just so like, okay, well, I have these two really simple questions, and like, well, you could have done that ahead of time. Right? Right, if, so...
I'm talking about concerns with the language.
I understand, I understand that. To me, it's, but, but there are also other things that, you know, in terms of conveyance of that.
Why do we, why do we do this? Oh, that makes sense now.
Right.
Got it.
All right. That'll take off that special meeting, all right?
So, okay, so where did, where, we're in the middle of a motion right now.
We are. Can you remind me what the motion is?
The motion, well, so with a little lack of a better word, clue G, but related to seeing Wendy's corporate life comes to haunt her, but it was related to supporting the director's approval of a contract with equitable to, equitable to the high school contract, verified by a board member, and verified by a board member. Right? We didn't, we never, we never resolved that, because we kind of swirled around it.
Okay, so discussion on the motion. I would say, my discussion on the motion is, the timing system doesn't need to be part of either one of those contracts, because right now, I do not believe, unless there's any other objections, that the district can afford to upkeep the Colorado timing system for anybody, which is, it's not in our budget.
Have six baseball games a week without a squareboard?
There's no way to do it.
Yep.
There's no way to do it. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Good. All right. Yes, ma'am?
I move that we adjourn the death boy.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is adjourned, uh, meeting is adjourned, not the motion, but the meeting is adjourned at 2026.
And, pity, pity, sorry. Commissioner Hart, Commissioner Hart, we need to sign...